Did you hear me all the way over there?
This time we'll hold any order.
Father God in heaven, we thank you for this day and we thank you for this group of people. We pray for wisdom and we pray that they govern over this city well and then we pray for the discussions that happened tonight. In Jesus' name we pray, amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Are there any changes to the agenda?
We do have a couple. We'll need to table the discussion on the water conservation plan again here in Phil. And then we need to add a short executive session for acquisition of real estate, probably ten minutes and be able to be sufficient. I moved it from the agenda as amended.
Moved by Commissioner Hutchinson, second by Commissioner Wentz to approve the agenda as amended. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye. All opposed, same sign.
All opposed, same sign.
And moving on to the trap neuter release program update.
Jody Baker, Animal Control Officer. I think everybody got the paper with the statistics and stuff on it. We're just kind of update what we did last year. The city allocated the $3,000 for using the Have a Heart TNR program to try to get rid of some of the strays in town. And we ended up that they worked over around 247 cats altogether. The 3,000 that the city got paid for like 58 of the cats and the rest of it, John Myers paid for out of his donations and same grants and stuff. So you know, take that into consideration, I guess, and see whether you want to do it again this next year or what. The main thing we kind of got a little sweat in right now is that John doesn't really have time to trap himself to do it because he does so many other talents and things. So we have to, we need to find somebody else as a volunteer that's trustworthy and you know, sticks with it and stuff to take over and try to do it this year and stuff for trapping because it's quite a job and stuff. But yeah, I think the program worked pretty good. There, we mostly did, I say we, but I didn't really do if they did, but they went mostly north of town. They had the largest colonies in the north part of town, but you know, they hit other areas that when people would call and they had columns there, they tried to hit some of the other areas and stuff all over town. But those were the huge ones up that way. And you kind of need to stay on top of like there was some kittens and younger ones that they couldn't get this round. Need to go back in and try to get those stuff.
Jody, I apparently was a couple of minutes late. Sorry. I'm Joanie Rodaba and I live just off Broadway. And you and I talked about the TNR program. Mr. Williams is the one that
Myers.
Myers is it that lives out of town? Now, how, is there some grants that have been applied for or just donations from the community? How, how has it been funded in the past?
That's his program. He gets grants and donations. He has the Have a Heart Pionaut.
Yeah, okay. I just couldn't remember what it was called.
From Clifton.
Yeah, from Clifton. Okay. About how many animals did he do last year? Do you have any idea?
247, I think it was.
And I'm sorry if I
So there, there will be an opportunity for public comments or questions here where the public is invited to speak publicly.
All right. I was just kind of curious because that's right up my alley. I've been in rescue for a long time. So I'll let you go ahead.
Any other information that you'd like to share with us, Jody?
I, I think if we do decide to do this again, I'd really like to sit down and get it reworked and get it maybe a little more fine tuned on who's responsible and where the money's all coming from and how it's going to end up at the, at the end of the day.
I, I do think that it's a worthwhile project and worthwhile idea. So being able to iron some of that out, I think would be really helpful.
I think just making it fine tuned would, would be very helpful.
Can we see if this is going to be a budget request for next year that we just kind of have an outline of how the funding's going to work and maybe a better idea of who's going to be doing the volunteer work and just in a presentation like our other organizations do, just so we kind of have an idea of how that will be.
Absolutely. Budget meeting and
Yeah.
Holding that in. But, but also know that just taking them off the street doesn't really do a lot. So being able to send it back to their territories, having been neutered helps maintain that population.
But it definitely is ongoing.
Yeah, there's no end.
No end to it.
Yeah, but when you think of a one cat having three litters, you know, six, I mean, it's been so big, Jim, you're talking about many cats and stuff. So it does, it does help, but it will take a while to get, you know, where you really see it. At least they're not repopulating those. We just some of the different areas. Like, you know, I thought of some other things that might help with it too, but.
So I think it was early last year, we brought this to you and asked if you were interested in trying it as a pilot and we did that and authorized an overage of $3,000 from Jody's budget to pay for it. We did not include it in the budget request for 2024. So if we bring it in the spring of 2024, it'll be for the 2025 budget. If you guys want to continue anything in 2024, you want to pause it and bring it as a formal request to continue in 2025, if you approve it then.
Definitely want to see more of those details ironed out on a volunteer and the, the structure before we approve any money for it. And my, my
And then
That makes some sense, especially if we, if we're not sure if John's, what can be able to continue with us, that makes some sense.
Yeah. And then maybe we were able to have that information prior to the formal budget session that we planned for 25 and still be able to do something within 24 as we kind of find details. So I mean, I don't think we have to wait per se for that. So if we figure it out for them, show up and hear them that.
We'll get some stuff.
I mean, springtime's when the big starts up. So you'd have to start getting on it, you know, if you're going to do something this year, get, so you don't lose, lose momentum.
Yeah. Sounds like comments are the essence. So figure out what we need to do.
All right.
My, my thanks.
So now this would be a time for public comments where the public gets invited to speak. We would ask that you state your name. There'll be three minutes to offer any comments that you may have. So this would be a time if you wanted to address the commission with any information.
Okay.
Oh, you're into it. Okay.
Okay. It's an honor.
Oh, yeah. Well, I've been working in the shed and looking along like old lady, which I am proud of it. I'm Joanie Rodaba and I moved here a year ago last, the end of August. Bought a little house down here, retired. Anyway, I do have a little feral cat colony in my neighborhood that the neighbors I visited with and I am going to trap, there's two males that I've identified as the culprits and I am going to trap them and I will pay to have them taken care of. When I lived in Grand Island, I lived there for decades and had a business for 25 years. I had a business there and I did trap the feral cats that were in our neighborhood that showed up and called them in. Our Humane Society in Grand Island, that was Central Nebraska Humane Society, had a good TNR program. But here again, you know, it all depends on budgets and grants and things. So I did, I was able to utilize that a couple of times. And then a couple of times I took them to the vet and paid for it because it's the right thing to do, you know, and if you can get the males fixed, right, Jody, you get the males fixed, then you've got your little brother head. And, and I know there's people out there that say just shoot them or kill them, or if they die, they die. It doesn't work like that. That's Jody. Unfortunately, they just multiply faster than that and we don't want to be any more than either. So anyway, I'm all for the TNR program. My daughter Billy Lukey owns Upcycle Consignment, been business owner now for kind of six, seven years. And that is actually, I do a goal list every year and that is the top thing on my goal list for 2024 was to meet with Jody or talk to Jody about the TNR program. And so I think it's a great thing and I would love to help in any way that I could. Okay. So I guess that's all I got to say. And if, you know, you've got my number, but I'll make sure you have it before I leave. Wonderful. So I hope that if there is money in the budget that can be utilized. And if we can get some grants, maybe somebody out there is good at writing those because from my understanding, I'm working with nonprofits in the past. It does take somebody that knows how to write those grants to get that money. So maybe our finance director is good at writing brands or something. But anyway, that's, that's it. I think it's a great show break. So thank you so much for considering and thank you, Jody.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
And that's our chief of police. Yeah.
My name is Norman Hayden and I would like to make a couple of comments on this. I was one of the people mentioned as one of the trackers at the time. My help would be get up in these wild territories, one thing and another. As a personal observation to me, it is, we caught approximately 220 cats, or 251 or two cats at the end of the project last year. And we ran out of money, but of course, and there is several other programs around as you can find out. But I think it is a very undoable thing to be able to track anywhere near as many cats as was caught last year on a trial program you all approved of. And that's basically what I'm saying. It'd be in my estimation, if you can catch a fifth that many cats, of 50 to 60 cats at the most, I think it would be, it's going to be doable possibly, but I kind of quit back off in the trap because of help. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comments? I appreciate your participation and being here to speak. Moving on to our agenda, the minutes of the December 20th, 2023 meeting.
I'm going to approve the minutes of the December 20th, 2023 meeting.
So moved by Commissioner Hutchinson, second by Commissioner Jackson to approve the minutes of December 20th, 2023. Is there any further discussions? Hearing none, all in favor say aye. Aye, all opposed, same sign. Motion passes. Moving on to appropriation ordinance 24.
I'm going to approve the appropriation ordinance 24.
Second, so moved by Commissioner Jackson, second by Commissioner Wentz to approve appropriation ordinance 24. Is there any further discussion? Excuse me, hearing none, all in favor say aye. Aye, all opposed, same sign. Motion passes. Moving on to resolution 2024-2171, waiver of gap.
This is a resolution that we do every year, has to be done yearly to go get away from the generally accepted accounting principles and use the cash basis of accounting, which is pretty standard for Kansas, just so that we show cash as it is received and expensed instead of having receivables on the books at the end of the year.
Any questions?
I'll move to approve resolution 2024-2171.
Moved by Commissioner Wentz, second by Commissioner Jackson to approve resolution 2024-2171. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye. Aye, all opposed, same sign. Motion passes. Moving on to utility billing account write offs.
We started this last year when we got into our new system and it was easier to accomplish this. So last year was a larger list. This year there is only, there are only seven accounts. I think all of them had passed away, but it could be for other reasons. So these are no longer collectible or we've been told by the collection agency also that they're no longer collectible. So just ask that you approve those to be written off.
I'm going to approve the list of utility bill accounts for write-off in the amount of $992.81 since they have been deemed uncollectible. Second.
Moved by Commissioner Hutchinson, second by Commissioner Wentz to approve the list of utility billing accounts for write-off in the amount of $992.81 since they have been deemed uncollectible. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye. Aye, all opposed, same sign. Motion passes. Moving on to resolution 2024-2172, mission policy statement bill inserts.
We decided to move forward on this. We do get a fair amount of requests to place things in the water bills. And we have done it in the past. Generally someone has come and handed us 1,500 copies or however many we have. And we just go ahead and insert them. The inserter does run slower. It takes Megan a little bit more time, but we've just done it as a courtesy. Recently, we did have one that we ended up doing for free and it costs a little bit of money to do that. So it just seemed to make sense to have a policy where we will be able to have an answer for anyone who requests it. In the past, Megan has offered to hand out our special paper that's perforated on the bottom, but we don't really want to do that. So we don't offer that as an option. But they can still bring their own in at no cost, just a little bit extra for the labor that it takes her to go back and work on the, on the inserter. It might change if we ever get a new one, which we didn't need to budget for that next year probably. It'll probably be able to handle things a little bit speedier, but right now this one jams if you put too much paper through it and that kind of thing. So she kind of has to stand there and watch it too. So based on talking to the gentleman down at Century Business Systems that sold us the copier, he kind of suggested five cents for black and white, the 25 cents for color. We don't pay quite that much, but we do pay for each color copy and we have a black and white, we are allowed 4,000 a month, I think. We usually don't reach that, but with color, like this last time, we got an extra bill for $208, I think for the color. So it does add up over a certain period of time. So I don't know if there's anything that is not in here or any questions you have about it.
How many times a year is, is that, I don't know, that you come across?
She kind of just knows the billing without me knowing, but I'm going to say two or three maybe. We do put our own things in once in a while. Around March, I think we do the dog tags and that kind of thing.
So what are some examples of what people put in? I'd get, I guess now, yeah.
I know. The people that have them emailed don't get this.
I appreciate you asking that.
In this case, it was the tourism partners that wanted to put together a year in advance for people to plan their 2024 events that they had. So the Brown Grant Tourism POW Camp at Orbitrain Museum, that group of folks. And I think Megan did do a PDF emailing with the water bills that those that got the electronic copy could also see it. But that, that was the request this time that kind of prompted us to take a look at this.
I think in terms of advertising expense, the numbers that you're talking about are still very reasonable considering the, the distribution that they're receiving. So I think it makes sense. We're not generating a tremendous amount of income from this, but able to cover costs that are above and beyond what we're being normally doing. I think it's
I, I kind of, I mean, I don't worry, but if this became something that people wanted every month, I wouldn't really like that either because obviously there's wear and tear on the copier. We'd pay maintenance on that. So it is kind of something, I mean, you should do it every month, but I don't think we have a request for that that often.
We also want to be mindful that we don't jump into any advocacy that's
Yeah.
even for other government entities.
Can't do that because then it looks like a government endorsement of whatever it might be.
So no campaigning or
Well, even just, you know, another government entity town has a project or something that you stick in our water bill and somebody, it's an endorsement of the project. And or you said nonprofits, but 501(c)(4)'s are set up on purpose to be kind of a pseudo political organization. So maybe 501(c)(3)'s and 501(c)(6)'s instead of fours, but.
I'm thinking too, the other thing we need to be mindful of is that like the blade and then CK today. Yeah, they, they make a significant portion of their revenue off advertising. So we don't necessarily want to compete with them. So we want to make sure that we're being very mindful of that as we be very selective with what goes in here. Tourism partners made sense in this case because that generates additional sales tax that it supports us and we're, we're part of that tourism partner. So in this, in this case, that makes sense.
And it is kind of discussed here. If the request comes to Megan, yes, generally comes to her, I think, and she'll discuss it. So she doesn't just take it upon herself, but.
I, I do appreciate that level of filtration that takes place. I think it's going to be important to maintain that, but having a policy that helps establish to be able to cover the costs. So now how into the weeds, we need to get in the policy, but if that filtration's taking place.
When we don't have a policy, we'll say something to one and then we'll forget what we said. And so then everybody's going to treat it differently. So
This helps us out.
Sure.
Again, it does seem like it's reasonable just to cover costs. So with that, I'm going to approve resolution 2024-2172. Second.
Moved by Commissioner Jackson, second by Commissioner Hutchinson to approve resolution 2024-2172. Is there any further discussions? Hearing none, all in favor say aye. Aye, all opposed, same sign. Motion passes. Moving on to manager's report.
Hearing commissioners, we've got the progress on the demolition of 830 West 11th is moving along very, very slowly before Christmas. Did have a very firm directive to the contractor that he needed to get done prior to the February 1 start date for our contractor on the St. Joseph subdivision, where that ended up being turning over that property to that contractor to finish the work. So progress is being made. It's being made mostly on the inside. Bruno's doing a great job kind of monitoring that for us. So we appreciate that. Let's see, we did receive several applications for the public works director position. I believe we have at least four viable ones right now. And so we'll begin reviewing those next week. Hopefully a few more come in. As well as we get some good candidates to choose from, but we are going to be progressing with that. Local Government Day at the Capitol, sponsored by the League of Kansas Municipalities will be January 24th. I think I emailed you guys about that. So if you're interested in going, let me know by Friday or so this week so we can get registered and then get transportation planning done. Also, I had sent out a follow-up email to you based on question from the December 20th meeting about LAVTR this morning. And then four o'clock this afternoon, we got an email saying that there is a hearing with Senate Taxation Committee next Thursday morning. Testimony is due next Wednesday morning. So I would appreciate some guidance. If you want us to go ahead and jump on that bandwagon with some written testimony or just provide general support to the league with their testimony, what would you prefer us do? The league is of course asking for everybody to provide written testimony because it's the first hearing on this since, in at least 10 years. And the proposed bill restores 100% of funding beginning this fiscal year. Your, your email described, I guess, just the amounts. And if we have to pick and choose what we're going to stand behind or endorse, the amount based on the 40,000 wasn't as significant as some of the other things that are going to be on the agenda. So I would definitely support the league in pushing for it. I, I don't, I mean, as far as written testimony. I'm, I'm okay without, with or without, I guess.
You really think we'll be in a defensive position on the remaining local sales tax?
I haven't heard a lot of talk about it yet, but the information that I also got, didn't think that there was going to be a hearing on this item. So I'm, I'm not, I'm not real sure. Yeah. So yeah, to, to bring everyone up to speed, prior to LAVTR ceasing in 2003, we received approximately 40,000 a year from that. And the intent was to lower property tax as a result. So whatever we received from the subsidy, lower property tax in about that amount. At that point in time, it was equivalent to about one and a half mils. Projecting forward is kind of difficult. A lot of things have remained the same, but some populations declined, but as the valuation's gone up, there's a couple of metrics. We don't have the exact figures from the 3.63% of the sales tax that would be used to do this formula. The governor did just cut the 6% sales tax on food and groceries, which is a large portion of our sales tax here in this county. So I don't know what that formula would equate to. If we projected the 40,000 forward, it would be approximately 800,000 that we've given up over the last 20 years. If we project one and a half mils forward, that's approximately 707,000 that we've given up over the last 20 years. That piece, I didn't read this bill as that that would be reinstated or that would be given back. Those that would just be from this point forward, following that formula, recognizing that we don't know what amount of sales tax would have done. And then it's distributed to counties, then distributed based on a formula based on population of assessed valuation. So it's going to be about the same.
Was, does the bill require that governing entities that reduce their mils? It does require it?
Yeah. So we'd have to have a budget, the line item in our budget specific to LAVTR. We have to prove that whatever is in our budget, that our mil levy is under the maximum that we could ask for. And then whatever they would give to us or our allocation for LAVTR, we'd have to reduce our, our budget by our property tax levy by that much. It's intended to offset that.
But that hasn't been happening since 2003. Even, even with us having that on, like the reduction, we haven't done that since 2003 either.
We haven't. So we've, we've actually ruled our mil levy fairly steady. I mean, it's, it's been, been real steady since that point in time, but we have not received the LAVTR subsidy since that point.
Why now?
Kansas Association of Counties in particular is really, really pushing for it. We saw that article that came out on, on CK today on behalf of the, Paul County published it, but it was on behalf of the Kansas Association, Kansas Association of Counties. They've got a big website push going. The league is getting on board as well. I don't know if it has to do with the, the state has a large surplus of revenue and then they reduce the state sales tax. I'm, I'm not sure exactly what's popping in. Trying to fight and advocate, I guess. Inflationary pressures hit us too with supplies and equipment and labor demands. So I think everybody's just trying to make sure that we get fair shares. There's a lot of members of the public that definitely don't want to see increases in property taxes. And we've seen that from various entities around, around the state and around our community in particular too. So this would be one way that they could possibly lower those again and help out.
I think sometimes there's this false like narrative that there's too many asks. You, I don't know that that bill to reduce local sales tax is even going to come up. You know, so
And it may not.
If there's an opportunity sometimes, it's, and if our county commissioners are, it's a way to kind of support what they're trying to do. So I don't really have a problem doing written testimony. I mean, who's it going to hurt that we all, I mean, I, I guess I would obviously be for it because it's a wash, but it's helpful to taxpayers. So I don't know why we would pull it in order to play a chess piece that might not even exist.
I would, I think we should do everything every time we can. Yeah, I mean, they get tired of hearing us. So we're advocating.
Well, I mean, I do, I do agree with that. I guess I was kind of under the impression that there was a limited number of that.
So, so that was why, I mean, that's why I went that direction. But if we haven't, like in, since 2003, if we haven't lowered mil levies or if the county hasn't lowered mil levies, then we haven't been doing our part either. or if the county hasn't lowered mill levies, then we haven't been doing our part either, you know, and in that. I guess in utilizing that, so I mean, yeah, I agree, but of course, having things be less of a burden, our taxes be less of a burden on people is a benefit, but we would, we would have to do our part then in that going forward.
Thank you. That's all I've got, unless you have any questions for me.
Staff reports? Anyone? Commissioner comments?
Um, the, you may have, I may have missed any notes or something. The fence for the cemetery, is it coming down for good? It'd be great if it, I mean, that would be great.
To be burned.
Okay.
Put back, what we want to put back is a lot of money for that litter feet, coming litter feet.
I imagine it's easier to mow with it off.
Yeah, we'd like to smooth out that drum off too, either the motive, so we're going to try to do that. Probably do email, so we'll evaluate, let's get back to the cost.
So you guys working on it? That's all I have.
Any? Like a record that we beat, you know, you're. I don't have any comments. Another wonderful holiday season in Concordia. I extended the invitation, it's happened, it took extended twice, so.
I move at the city commission recess to executive session for the preliminary discussion of acquisition of real estate, exception K S A seventy-five, forty-three, nineteen, eighty-six. Amy Lang and Justin Brown attendance and to reconvene in the city commission chamber at six twelve. Yeah. Second.
Move by Commissioner Hutchinson, second by Commissioner Wentz to if the city commission recessed executive session for the aforementioned reasons, is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye. Aye, all opposed, same sign. Motion passes. No action was taken. This time I would entertain a motion for adjournment. Second. Move by Commissioner Jackson, second by Commissioner Wentz to adjourn, is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye. Aye, all opposed, same sign. Motion adjourned.